Let's stand for the pledge, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to remind everybody to turn off their cell phones and silence them so we won't be interrupted. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Alan Silver to the stage. He is a board member-elect. He will be taking over and be sworn in in the beginning of July as our new board member.
This may be the first introduction of you, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're here to see how complicated it is or easy it is and why we have two student volunteers, right, who help us as interns for Mrs. Karstad. And then your swearing-in will be on July 2nd, and so we congratulate and welcome you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to serving.
So we're doing this apparition, Mrs. Warding. All right, we are doing Operation Recognition to Leonard Sobalow, diploma presented by high school principal Mark Shibish. Am I reading off this?
So in the 1970s, New York State started a program called Operation Recognition, which was an opportunity for those who met the criteria and had served in the military and were unable to finish their high school diploma to apply to a local school district that existed at the time where they would have graduated. Mr. Sobalow was just sharing with me, he actually went to school in this building because at the time, this was a high school. And so I think we started to talk about what year that might have been, and then I walked away. Did we figure it out? What year that might have been that you would have graduated had you not gone into the military?
Fifty-three.
So you would have graduated in 1953. So this building really wouldn't have been open very long. It would have been new. We don't consider it new anymore, right? We considered it a building that needs some work now. So, all right, so I've asked Mr. Shibish if he could do the honors. Do you need me to get up, or are you all good?
No ma'am.
So why don't you come toward front and center as you would in a regular graduation ceremony and do your thing, facing that way.
The people that don't seem... Good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Anzalone, and all those in attendance tonight. It is my honor to be here to celebrate our distinguished guest, not only as the Eden High School Principal, but as someone who comes from a strong military family. Mr. Sobalow served in the Korean War that began June 25th, 1950, when North Korea invaded South Korea. The United States entered the war June 27th, 1950, supporting South Korea. Operation Recognition is a program that allows school districts to give diplomas to service men and women who did not finish high school due to their service to our country prior to the completion of high school. Mr. Sobalow is part of a generation who, when the country called, he answered and left everything he knew behind. Tonight, we recognize his service and all those who have served in the armed forces in the defense of our freedoms. The Korean War Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC says it best. "Our nation honors her sons and daughters who answered the call to defend a country they never knew and a people they never met." Members of the Board of Education, as principal of Eden High School, I certify to you that Mr. Leonard Alfred Sobalow has met the requirements for Operation Recognition to receive a high school diploma set forth by Eden Central School Board of Education and the state of New York. Mr. Sobalow, please come and accept your Eden High School diploma.
Congratulations. So next, we've already... Well, we'll wait for Sandy. Forgot she wasn't here. Now I feel that you're coming. Okay. So next is a thank you to Angelia Legrosso and Caroline Safrida, our student representatives to the school board this year. You have done a wonderful job and you will be missed. Thank you. Do you want to say something?
Hello. We just want to say thank you to you guys for making this year really special, and it was such an honor to be a part of this board. We did some things this year that we never thought we would do in Eden, and it wouldn't be so without you guys. So if you don't know, next year I'm going to Deuville, and I'm going to be a P.A. So, yeah, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Okay, first off, I would just like to thank our principal, Mr. Shibish. He has been instrumental in helping our class plan and implement many events this year. He stepped in as our student council advisor when we didn't have one, and he has an open-door policy that made working with him such a pleasure. Mr. Shibish enforces roles and makes our school a better place. I like his no-nonsense approach and the fact that he treats us all like adults. When we found out Mr. Servoni was moving to the middle school, we were disappointed. But then Mr. Shibish was hired, and we realized how fortunate we were to have two excellent principals in our building. They work well together, and they work well with students. On a personal note, I would like to thank the Eden Central School District and the school board for the excellent education I have had here. I am prepared to move on to the next chapter, and I am extremely grateful for the teachers I have encountered and the experiences I have had over the past four years. I have been blessed to have wonderful teachers and the support of two excellent principals. Mr. Shibish and Mr. Servoni have been encouraging and helpful as we have planned events and worked on student government projects. I would also like to thank Mrs. Anzalone for the time she has spent with me and for the projects we have worked on together, and I will miss being a part of the school as I move on. So thank you so much for everything. It's been a great year.
We want to thank both of you for your input and all that you've done for the school over the last four years. Thank you very much.
Yeah. You guys are running out to go somewhere.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we have to go to our Spanish dinner. So I would like to introduce to you Megan Walsh. She is the treasurer next year, and the other members couldn't be here because of recitals and games and stuff, but they said that they're gonna do their rotations to get to know everybody, and so everyone's involved this year. So...
So does that mean Megan's gonna be taking your chair?
Megan will be taking my chair right now. Yes, she will.
Oh, wow. Welcome, Megan. Okay.
Let her say a little spiel about herself, but we're gonna hit the road. Thank you guys so much for everything, really.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
So, welcome, Megan. We appreciate you being here tonight. Is there anything that you'd like to address to the board or anybody, or would you rather just sit there quietly?
I'm just really excited to be here. I mean, I would have never seen myself here before. But then when I ran this year and I got elected, I was really excited. So thank you all for being so welcoming to me, and I'm excited.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good luck. You got this.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next. A big thank you to Paul Shepherd, who's our outgoing board member and president. Big shoes to fill.
So a number of years ago, our technology department started to... Oh, thank you, Laura. But I still have to stand here, so it doesn't matter. But thank you. Started to make a going-away present, and Paul really fell in love with that entire idea. This one was made by... Will you hold it, Paul, because it's a little too heavy for me? It was made by Emily Enterline, who is a 10th grade student. It says "Thank You" on the top. It has his years of service, which is 2013 to 2019, on the bottom. It has, what do you call it, the symbol for the Air Force, right, and it has a Raider on it. If he chooses to put it on an accent wall, then it doesn't need anything on the back. They didn't want to suppose what you would do. But this was Emily's design. She couldn't be here tonight, but I'm sure that you'll find her at some point on your own. It's absolutely beautiful, isn't it? Yes.
I love that it has the Air Force emblem and the school.
That was her choice, yes.
I know. Look at that. That's beautiful.
So Paul has been instrumental in the last six years of being able to bring unity to our Board of Education. Since I came in 2013, this entire Board of Education has completely changed over. And to have stability and have board members running for more than one term is certainly supportive of the district, and I place that all on Paul. He's compassionate. He's empathetic. He listens. He hears the community. He talks to the staff. He has made all the difference for me in my time here at Eden. So, Paul, thank you again. We will certainly miss your leadership.
I just want to thank everyone for the six years. It's gone by incredibly fast. I've enjoyed it tremendously, and I will miss it. I didn't think when I first ran that I would be here six years later, but thanks to the community, and I was very humbled by them allowing me to continue, and then for the board electing me to be president of the board. I am also very humbled by that. I have learned a lot, and I have been able to take it back into where I teach, and it's incredible when you know both sides. And now when I go into my office and I talk to my boss, and he goes, "No, I understand." So again, thank you, and thank you for the support of the board, and this board is an awesome group to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Getting back to the agenda, request to withdraw specific items from consent agenda. Okay, moving on, approval of consent agenda items. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items A through U be approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
I'm just waiting till I can get up there. All right, now is time for public comment. Approximate... The board will review... Okay, this is the time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit.
Hi, everyone. I'm Pat Profic. I have a suggestion that isn't very important in the grand scheme of things unless Kelly Ray is trying to reach you to tell you your son broke his wrist. I just changed jobs. I don't work for Personal Touch anymore. I work for Wegmans. And I went to the demographics section of the parent portal, and I put the phone number and the main phone number of the store. People at the service desk don't know who I am yet. If I put the pizza number, and I'm in the freezer, I'm not gonna get that call. So I would like to suggest some kind of pop-up box or someplace you can put additional information, like an extension or department after the phone number, so that you can be reached in case of emergency. And that's all. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen Gaglion, parent and PTA member. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Marlene Grunder for all of her help with Raiders Respond. She was instrumental in making sure that this year we included the entire district, which was... It turned out to be a phenomenal day. We had a couple glitches that we're gonna work on, but with the help of the principals at the high school, Mr. Shibish and Mrs. Servoni, we included all over 750 kids there and really didn't have any issues. So we're very proud of the kids. If you were around Eden that day, you couldn't help but get goosebumps to see the community excitement, the kids' excitement, the parents. That night on social media, a lot of the businesses posted pictures of East Eden Fire Hall with the kids. The nursing homes put pictures of the kids. A lot of the district's students went and played instruments there for the elderly. It was just amazing to see the GLP during their lemonade stand and their car wash and the elementary school. So it was just very exciting. I know Mrs. Anzalone was busy driving around and taking pictures, yes. I wanted to have more pictures to bring tonight, but I wasn't that organized as Marlene is. So a couple concerns we have is that it's a big job for two parents to run. So maybe in the fall, we can get together with the board and address some of our concerns about how we can continue this. We feel as parents and as PTA members that it's very important to continue this, but we definitely can't do it with just the PTA. So if we could maybe meet, we'll arrange that. That would be lovely. Also, I can't say enough about the staff, especially at the high school, because we haven't done it a few years. So they were very patient with Marlene and I. Hopefully, we weren't too bossy that day. But we appreciate their support because really, if they are not excited, the kids aren't excited. We actually had teachers that haven't participated at the high school in years, and actually, I got a couple emails from them saying how much they enjoyed it, and the excitement, it was just very emotional. And I don't know, did anybody see the Penny Saver that Langs put in a little quote? Just let me read it real quick. It says, "Last week, you may have seen students from our schools out and about in town working on various projects. Raiders Responding isn't just about a day out of the classroom. It's a day to learn through doing. It's a day that teaches that each of us can make a difference in the town we live in many ways. Learning the value and significance of community service is an important part of education. Making Eden just a little bit better through their efforts should give them a sense of pride. And it is a good thing for all of us to remember. Community service isn't just about... Isn't just something for students. We each need to do our part to ensure that we are making this a good community for who live there, all that live there."
Very nice.
And thank you to Marlene. She really deserves it.
So, Colleen, I don't know how long you're staying, but later when it's my report, I was gonna thank you both. So are you leaving, or are you staying?
No, I'm staying.
All right. I'll leave it in order, because poor Ellen's going back and forth on the agenda, so I will address it later then.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess not. Under new business resignations, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of fitness center worker Hannah Mardino be accepted effective May 15th, 2019.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Just later on, you'll see that there is a recommendation for replacement for Hannah, and also on our website are the new posted hours for summer all the way through to December.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
The appointment guidelines. Do I have to read all those, do I? Okay. So going to our next one. "That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jennifer Dibble, who is permanently certified as a school counselor, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the school counselor tenure area for a probationary period commencing on January 2nd, 2019, and ending on January 1st, 2022, unless extended in accordance with the law. Effective July 1st, 2019, salaries based upon ETA contract Masters Plus 30 Step 7."
Second. Any questions or comments?
So you noticed that this is retroactive to January. Jen has been with us since January in a long-term subposition, and the law does allow for me to do that continuous to appointment probationary to the following year. And so that's why the dates are the way they are. Also, there's a three-year probationary period on this because she has been tenured in the past, and she has done an incredible job for us at the high school. We're thrilled to have her.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
"That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Catherine Sherry, who is initially certified in childhood education 1 through 6 and early childhood education B through 2, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2019, and ending on August 31st, 2023, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salaries based upon ETA contract, Bachelor's Step 1."
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
And Catherine is here tonight. You just waved so everybody can see where you are. So welcome to Eden.
"That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Arianna and Kyle..." I'm sorry, K.O., thank you. "...who is initially certified in music is hereby appointed as a part-time .66 FTE music teacher effective September 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. Salaries based upon ETA contract Masters Plus 30 Step 4."
Second. Any questions or comments?
So just as a clarification of why this one looks different, this is not a probationary position. This is a part-time position, which is annual. It's a .66, but I have to say, Arianna, I'm so sorry I didn't get to say "low." I was like running in so many directions. Arianna had the opportunity to go to at least two other districts and chose to come to Eden, and so I'm glad you're here tonight for the board to vote on your appointment.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
So welcome, Arianna. Welcome.
All right. Reappointment of part-time employees. "That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following part-time personnel be appointed for the 2019-2020 school year. Karen Bozacki, .6 full-time equivalent music teacher effective September 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2020. Salaries based upon ETA contract, Master Step 4. Christopher Duff, .83 FTE, library-media specialist, effective September 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Salaries based upon ETA contract, Master Step 2. Adriana Jimenez, .5 pre-K and .3 math AIS teacher, effective September 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Bachelor's Step 2."
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Just want to break in and tell Arianna and Catherine, you do not have to stay for the whole meeting if you choose not to. But thank you so much for coming.
All right. "That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Gabby LaRosa, be appointed as a fitness center worker effective June 20th, 2019. Salary is $11.10 per hour."
Second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Summer appointments. "That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following be appointed to summer technology positions. Dylan Tylek, summer technology cleaner, effective July 1st, 2019. Salary is $11.10 per hour. Sue Roseman, summer technology cleaner, effective July 1st, 2019. Salary is $11.10 per hour. Lori Malkowski, substitute summer technology cleaner, effective July 1st, 2019. Salary is $11.10 per hour. Ray Neal, substitute summer technology cleaner, effective July 1st, 2019. Salary is $11.10 per hour. Ken Bergstaller, summer laborer, salary is $11.10 per hour. Jen Milson, summer laborer, salary is $11.10 per hour. Heather Mellon, summer laborer, salary is $11.10 per hour. James Kaminsky, summer laborer, salary is $11.10 per hour. Randall Pearson, summer technology integration specialist, 20 days, effective July 1st, 2019. Salary is $35.73 per hour. Peter Belgian, summer bus cleaner, effective July 5th, 2019, through August 31st, 2019. Salary is $11.70 per hour with CDL."
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
"That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate..." Do I have to read these items? Okay, these items.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
"That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Five filing cabinets, eight bookshelves, six teacher desks, 19 3x5 tables, two pianos."
Second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
"And that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. 72 old student chairs, 25 old student art stools, eight old art tables, 46 shelving units."
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Are these going to...
Lauren looks excited.
Going to auction, or don't...
No, not on the desks. David has a more profitable way, a scrapper that he works with who will come in, and the value of the metal on the desk will be worth more than he would project us to get at auctions international.
Okay. "Be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools that the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District hereby establishes within the district's existing retirement contribution reserve fund a new TRS sub-fund of the district to be established and separately operated pursuant to general municipal law Section 6R for the purpose of financing retirement contributions to the New York State Teachers Retirement System and/or to offset all or a portion of the amount deducted from the monies apportioned to the district from the state for the support of schools pursuant to Section 521 of the Education Law, and that the board hereby authorizes and directs the transfer of $100,000 from the general fund of the district to establish the new TRS sub-fund."
Second. Questions or comments?
This one has been a long time coming. It's been proposed for about a decade, and it finally got passed. We have had one for the employee retirement system, but not for the teachers, which is where the bulk of our employees are. This is a good thing. It will help us keep our budgets more balanced and leveled, as we know the investment in the market is what drives the TRS rates. So this is a good thing, and it will be another thing to add to our reserve plan for future planning. The money gets used when it's budgeted for because the Board of Education and the superintendent through the budgetary process deem that we need to close a budgetary gap, and then budgets the amount of money to contribute towards the TRS payment of the following school year. It is not voter authorized. It is Board of Education authorized.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
"That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the transfer of the 2018-2019 unassigned fund balance into the following reserves. Technology reserve, $250,000. Capital reserve vehicles, $500,000."
Second. Questions or comments?
Now, the technology reserve, we were just blessed to have the voters authorize in May. This will allow us to set aside funds. The initial plan is towards replenishing the Smart Schools bond of $979,000, I believe was our total award. And so therefore, this will give us a way to save the money as things break and need to be replaced so that our, again, our budget will remain stable. And it will work just like our capital reserve for vehicles, which we're replenishing some of the money used to buy buses this year. These two reserves, the capital reserve for technology and the capital reserve for vehicle purchases, will be a proposition each year that we plan to utilize them, that the voters will either approve or disapprove with a 50% plus one vote to approve.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
High, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the updated reserve plan dated June 19th, 2019.
Second, questions or comments?
This is the annual reserve plan that we started last January of, when I say last January, January of 18. This is the first time it's come up for a change, and it will, is meant to be an annual living document. So, each year when we say how the Board of Education, I've met with the audit committee to get their input on how they would like savings to go and what we would save for and how we would use those savings in the future. And so this plan is that formal, formalization of it, and it will be posted on the district's website in the business office section so that anyone who wants to can read it at any point in time.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
High, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the January 31st, 2020 retirement option MOU be approved.
Second, questions or comments?
So, just to put a little bit of background to this one, there was some conversation last year between ETA and the district about a possible retirement incentive that did not go through. And I do believe that there were some people last year who were pretty much hoping that it would. And by the time that came around and we have a January 31st notification to the district of retirement, it was just difficult for some people to get everything together. The district wants to be empathetic to those who are ready to retire, even though just trying to make up this year was exhausting for everybody who's retiring already. And the number of years that we're losing in people retiring is just amazing. The retirement party certainly showed that. People have contributed just an amazing amount to Eden. I don't know if there are people who will take advantage of this January option. They do need to notify the district by September 30th. If no one takes it, then it's fine. If somebody is interested in it, then we want to be empathetic to that fact. That basically the MOU allows them to utilize their contract language for sick day utilization conversion.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
High, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
To the business report.
Hi. In March, I took one out to get a quote for insurance from other insurance companies other than our current carrier, which is Utica National. There are two major players for school district insurance carriers in New York. They are New York State Insurance Reciprocal, NISER, and Utica. And NISER came back with a dramatic savings. The savings were $23,561. In addition to the savings of the premium from last year to next year, we will have $250,000 cyber liability insurance that we never had. And we do safety trainings every year. The entire district does them online to make sure everybody is up to date on the safety protocols for the district. And some of these trainings now will be eligible for the continuing teacher and leader education credits that are required for some of the newer certifications. So, while the teachers are doing it, they're going to be earning their C T L E credits, which is, I think, will be a positive for them. And then every five years, the district has to fix asset inventory. We just had ours done this year. It cost us $5,900. That will be included going forward in our NISER. So, on top of the $23,000, we're getting other savings that will be added to it. So, I think this is going to be a good move. Many districts in Western New York use NISER. I think it's probably 75% use NISER and 25% use Utica. And now we're making the switch because they just have a lot of benefits for us. This will be brought to the board on the reorg agenda. This is just kind of to let you know when you see it, why we are doing it. It is a huge savings for the district. There are, there are few ways that I can impact, and this was really a good one-time savings for us. Then the next thing is, the district put out three items that were accessed on Auctions International, and they closed two days ago. So, I know what the quotes are, and I was just waiting for the board to approve. So, for the three items that were excised, we're going to get $8,985 that will come back in a check from Auctions International, and will go into the general fund, which will help us to buy other things that are needed within the district. So, Auctions International is a web-based auction site. Nothing ever goes to a company like typically you see an auction. People go to a farm auction, and everybody's there. Auctions International is completely done online. They contact the schools. When someone buys it, they make arrangements, in this case with David Martin, and they will come and pick up their items. Once we have proof from Auctions International that they have paid. They get nothing until they give us proof. So, it's a really good system for us. And I think it's if we sell things for over $300, we don't have to pay a commission. So, that's an added bonus too.
And it's located right in East Aurora, so it's a local business.
Yes, that's true. Plus, I have to understand from when I went to my campus, they also have another at the other end of the state. So, that's, so that's, but the main headquarters is in East Aurora, was the old Fosses Auction Barn on Route 28.
Oh, okay.
No, we typically don't. Because you've excised it, you've given us permission to dispose of it as we deem. I'm just letting you know that there's a windfall coming from that. So, the next thing I want to say, I want to thank my staff, the district office staff. They are working diligently through the year end. And in April, which is not necessarily publicly known, but I think just about everyone in the district knows, we had a conversion from finance manager, our old accounting software, that was on a different platform that was archaic and almost docile in how you used it. And we went into Envision, which is like, it's like going from the old TV style with the rabbit ears to a digital cable TV system. So, it is a huge enhancement, and it's also a huge learning curve. And my poor payroll clerk, who's been doing her job for 30 years, is just like, oh, it used to be so easy. But we're getting there, and they're learning. So, I really wanted to thank them publicly for all the hard work that they've done. I would also like to thank the transportation and the buildings and grounds departments, which I supervise the managers of. And they have done a great job of getting students where they need to be, keeping things running, helping with the year end. And I just want to thank all of them for all of their hard work this year.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
I only have good news today, Paul. That's all I have. And you don't get to vote on that nicer thing because you're going to be gone. I know. I saw that realization in your head for a minute. I don't know if this is even common knowledge because it was just released today, right, Lauren, for immediate release? So, as you know, it's one of the new, newer programs that we're following through the state of New York Education Department. GLP was recognized, immediate release today, as a school of recognition by New York State Education Department. Interestingly enough, there were only so many schools in New York State that were recognized for this. Basically, I'm going to read it because it's really new to me. And when I called Lauren, she's like, I'm frantically researching all the reasons why too, right? But it says, "The teachers and administrators at these recognition schools have taken to heart the critical mission of educating the whole child." And this comes from our Board of Regents Chancellor, Betty Rosa. "These schools serve as models of the levels of performance that we seek for all schools to be able to achieve in the future. And GLP will receive their very own certificate of recognition from the commissioner." And so, Lauren, I want to thank you for your leadership at GLP. And this is the inaugural year of recognition schools, and you're on it. And so are your students and your staff. So, thank you.
Yay, good job.
And as I told you, I want a copy of the certificate. Business First rankings are out, but really out. Don, you've probably seen them online, right? Because if you have a subscription, you can grab onto the school rankings.
The book?
Is the book out?
Yeah.
I have one. So, 2019 Business First School Guide that was released comes out after every single day. They tease you with different type of data. I would tell you, out of 96 districts in Western New York, Eden is ranked in the top 20 and ranked number 18. And I am incredibly proud of those numbers. Two years ago, we were ranked 26. Last year, we were ranked 20, and this year, 18. So, huge, huge congratulations to everyone. This data goes through June of 2018. So, when you do see the publication, you'll see junior, senior high school, not middle school. Thank you, Kelly, for helping me on that one. I thought for sure that they had made a mistake. District science, this is all of our science programs at Eden schools are ranked in the top 10, ranking number seven. District math and English also in the top 20. Math ranking number 14, and English ranking 19. Eden Central School District, as the district is also considered to be an academic leader, ranking as a five-star district in science. When I bring that down to the number of high schools in Western New York, which also includes a junior, senior high school, there are 131. Data running through June of 2018 makes Eden Junior Senior High School an academic leader, ranking as a five-star district in science. Eden High School ranks number 26 out of 131 high schools. And Eden High School Science is ranked number 11. And so, I'm incredibly proud to bring that data to everybody. So, thank you. And go out and buy your own copy. I got to go to the store, I guess. The third thing I'd like to bring forward, and this will be in our Eden newsletter, and I will also get all of this published into our, our local media as well, is an alcohol awareness program that was held at Eden American Legion on May 22nd through the coordination of our school resource officer, Brian Bergstaller. It was an incredible event to watch. There were, there were seven adult volunteers who agreed to start drinking alcohol early in the morning at American Legion on the side where you can drink alcohol. At the same time, all of our seniors were over on the other side, not watching them drink. So, I thought that was really very appropriate, but watching as they would bring these seven very brave volunteers out every couple of hours so the students could see the difference of what happened. In addition to that, though, they started out by giving them all the field sobriety tests that they would give someone if they stopped them when these seven volunteers were sober, and then continued to readminister these same sobriety and field tests throughout the day. I got there right about the time that somebody blew, I think, a .23. It was a female. She weighed maybe in the 130s, standing next to a male who was probably six foot four, who blew maybe half of that. He looked completely, completely sober, and she did not.
Wow.
It was an amazing experience for our students. Brian organized the entire thing. Students heard presentations from police officers from Eden, the director of public safety from Hillburg College, the director of resident life and judicial affairs from Hillburg College, and Judge Cooper. Blood alcohol content, field sobriety tests, driving on a junior license, how many kids you can have in the car, excessive speed, fake IDs, what to expect on campus, with student alcohol abuse, underage drinking, drinking parties, getting behind the wheel with someone who's been drinking, and DWIs, distracted driving, and DWIs. I didn't even know the name of these. There's a walk and turn test, which sounds easy and was at 10:00 in the morning, but not at 1:00 PM. The one-legged stand, finger count, reciting the alphabet, which you think we all know, and a horizontal gaze. Every single one of these volunteers failed these tests by 1:00 in the afternoon. Students witnessed the BAC being checked. They witnessed a mock DWI traffic stop, and they also witnessed these volunteers being arrested, also a mock arrest. They heard the adult volunteers being read their Miranda rights, their DWI warnings, and then witnessed them being handcuffed and taken away. And as you can imagine, they also had good conversations throughout the day. So, they developed a relationship with these people throughout the day as well. Officer Bergstaller was, was instrumental in organizing this and getting it through. The ultimate goal was to educate students, particularly in the area of drinking and driving, and what they may encounter after they leave high school and in college. He really hopes that it hit home with the students, and he is hoping to offer it every, every single year. Personally, I'd like to really thank the Eden Police Department and the Eden Police Group. The Eden Police Group funded the entire program for the Eden Central School District seniors and the American Legion for having this program with them.
And I just want to point out, the Eden Police Department made sure they all got home safely.
Yeah, one wasn't feeling very well. I'd also, at this point, really like to come back, circle back to the comments from Colleen Gaglione. Colleen from PTA and Marlene also on the board in PTA were instrumental in making this year's Raiders Respond Day a pre-K 12. We have had numerous, numerous challenges and complications over the years of getting our seven through 12 to fully participate. And I totally understand that it was an endeavor beyond, beyond what two people can do. And so, come to me. We'll talk over the summer, see what we can do. And we can bring it to the Board of Education after that. I do have some pictures, too. We should get together and create some really nice slideshows and a slide deck of it that we can certainly use for maybe Eden Corn Fest, which would be fun. I'd also like to say that it was the only good weather day in the entire spring on a Friday. And so, thank you, Marlene, for being open-minded and saying, let's just go after Memorial Day. Because I do believe that if we had put this date where we originally were, it would probably have been about 45 degrees and snowing. So, a huge, huge thank you to everybody, including GLP Elementary School, all the parents who come and volunteer that day. It was amazing events. Watching the kindergartners run their 1.5K is always my favorite. But tonight, for Colleen and Marlene for making sure that that happened for the district. And lastly, I'd just really like to, to overall say thank you to the Eden community for their support of the school. Every year, I say at the retirement dinners, and I say at graduation of the four districts that I have worked at, that this is my absolute favorite district. And my, my only sadness is that I didn't come earlier, and I can't stay for another 10. But it is an incredibly supportive district, and the staff and the faculty and the parents and the students and the community just always rally around our students and our staff and faculty. So, thank you to everybody. That's all.
All right. So, now it would be a student report, but obviously, they already did that. But this is where you would get to say something at this point next year. So, be ready. And now for the board report roundtable.
I just wanted to quickly acknowledge our, some of our spring sports. So, our boys and girls lacrosse teams won their section, which is quite an accomplishment. Our girls' softball team not only won its section, but won its far west and went on to the state semifinals. And we had a number of records broken with our track team. And so, for a small school with a pretty small graduating class, even compared to the numbers that we put together, it's really a pretty impressive run. And no sign that those, that run is going to stop because there's a lot of underclassmen who were huge participants in those championships. In addition, in Business First, they also rank sports teams. And I think we were 18 or 19. And so, the same parameters, out of 130 schools, we were 18 or 19, top 20 certainly. And so, congratulations to Mrs. Valcaro Doherty, and really all the coaches and the program in general. Truly a terrific spring, and more to come.
And I want to take the opportunity to thank Mike Looby for coming down. He's our board attorney, and he's here tonight. He traveled down from Rochester to join us tonight at the meeting. So, we want to thank you for coming down.
Maybe we should make this an annual event for you, welcoming the new members and say goodbye to the old. You and Paul have certainly been on the phone enough over the past six years, right?
I get to take you off speed dial.
I get to take you off speed dial.
Maybe. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, thank the community and the board, superintendent and all the other administrators that I've worked with for the past six years. I've had a really enjoyable time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to mention, if you might see it up there, Raiders Respond Day, that there is a thank you from the Eden North Collins Food Pantry. And I volunteer there. I saw the food come in. It was, I think, about 1,000 pounds of food. And it came from GLP in fifth grade, if I'm not mistaken, also did it. And it's really so wonderful to have that variety. It's so wonderful for the clients who come in and it's so appreciated, you can't imagine, especially this time of year when donations sort of fall down.
So if you wanted a cup of lemonade at GLP, you had to bring a donation.
Is that, is that how it worked? Yeah, that was great. But anyway, very much appreciated. And also, I was fortunate enough to attend the retirement dinner that the ETA put on Linda Schwantz and Laura Feasley, I think, were the ring masters and they did a lot of work. And they did a lot to honor our CSCE and ETA retirees. And we are definitely losing a lot of talent. But it was a very nice evening and you honored them all in a great way. And speaking of former teachers, Jen Herschel is not here tonight because her aunt passed away, but her aunt also happened to be a former teacher, Denise Coffey. Denise taught third grade at Eden Elementary for several years. She had come to us from Buffalo and she wasn't here long, but if you were lucky enough to, like my son had her for third grade. And she was a wonderful teacher. She was memorable and kind and funny and definitely missed. So just keep her family and friends in your thoughts, please. And that's all I have to say.
I was also at the retirement recognition dinner and I've never attended one of those. I actually worked for Erie Tubose's and we're so spread out across Western New York and the southern tier that you go to a lovely picnic, if anybody gets, don't go tell anybody, Paul. This lovely picnic that recognizes, I think this year there were like 700 years worth of employees retiring, but it was very impersonal. And this was the first one. I thoroughly enjoyed hearing the skits about each of the retirees, even though I, I'm not from Eden. I landed here about 12 years ago to take care of my ailing parents. My sister and husband have raised their children here. They're out of Eden School District from kindergarten and actually Lauren wants coming back to student teach with you in the fall. I'm sorry. And I also attended the sports banquet. And I coached in East Aurora for 30 years and I've told Sandy and several people, when I first came out here, my niece, her junior year, the softball team won the States in Glen Falls, I think it was. And by the time we got back here that evening, which was probably about 11 or 12 o'clock, Paul and Sandy and some other people had instrumented a bonfire to recognize them.
No, it was 1:00 in the morning.
1:00, I'm sorry. Well, my 83-year-old mother got out of bed and came to recognize her granddaughter. So it was a hoot and a great thing. And East Aurora, never did stuff like that. I loved coaching in East Aurora, but who'd have thought I would have landed here? And after seeing the sports banquet and for a small town, a small school, like Jack said, it is amazing. And I'm very fortunate to be part of this community now and will probably end up staying here for forever. But it was great. Thank you for letting me attend those. It was wonderful.
I would ask Meg, right?
Yep.
How was your school year?
It was great. So it was my junior year, so it was the most stressful, obviously. But, but yeah, so now we have exams and those are pretty good. But, but we had prom, so that was good. That kind of ended the year off really well. And, and yeah, and we all got to participate in Raiders Respond this year and I know everyone was looking forward to that. And I don't know how, how prepared you felt for it, Mrs. Gaglione, but it seemed very prepared to me, though, as from a student's standpoint. It seemed, I don't know, it just seemed better than I had done in any other year, honestly. So, yeah. It was a great year.
So the next regular Board of Education Me Tuesday, July 2, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School auditorium. Paul's going to be at dinner.
It's Diane.
Not here.
We're going to bring the meeting to you.
I'm not going to tell you where I'm going.
Okay. 11B now enter into executive session.
Lucy, if you could go to B, I think everyone will be able to see it then.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session for the purpose of hearing legal advice under section 1A of the open meetings law to discuss the history evaluation of a particular person and to discuss contract negotiation of a vendor.
Second.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.